Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Kleiner.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Jean-François.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the common council, once again, we're here to begin our meeting with an acknowledgement and a thank you to a man who served our country. With me is Mr. Ken Van Skiver. Ken participated in the Honor Flight Program. He was on mission number seven that took place on April 11th, 2015. Once again, we're going to enter into our minutes recognition of Ken's service to our country and the Honor Flight Program, and we'll be forwarding a letter on to the Honor Flight. But we're here also to say thank you to Ken for his service to our country. He served in the Forty First Infantry from 1943 to 1947. He served in the Pacific Theater in Australia, Biak, New Guinea, and the Philippines. He then served in the Occupational Forces in Japan after the bombings from 1945 to 1947, and was honorably discharged with the rank of captain. So on behalf of myself, Ken, and the members of the common council, and the residents of City of Middletown, we want to say thank you with a small token of our appreciation for your service to our country. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome, I'm sure.
Well, thank you very much. I don't consider myself a hero in any direction. I did what I was told to do, and people did what I told them to do. And when it was all over, they said, "You've got to go home." I says, "Well, I don't want to go home." I says, "Well, I go if I stay in." No, you tell us first. I says, "No, I don't write blank texts. I'm going home." So I came home, and got married, and that's it.
Now, that was only the beginning, but we thank you so much, and your family's here with you today, and thank you so much.
That is for me?
That is for you, sir.
See you Sunday.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a very good evening.
See you Sunday. Okay, approval minutes?
There are no minutes this evening.
Okay, correspondents?
We also, just to, for the record, we are going to be entering into the minutes about Kenneth Van Skiver Jr. into the Honor Flight, the letter that was just given by the mayor.
Receive the file.
We also have a request to look at the Clemson Brothers parking lot for signage on different times for parking.
Over to Public Works.
That is all for correspondents.
Okay, for anyone who'd like to address this council, will you step forward?
Good evening. My name is Catherine McMenamy, and I live at Nineteen Willow Place in City of Middletown. And I am here once again to keep in the front of your minds the issues that we have with the new development proposed for County Seventy-Eight, drainage problems, and I hope that you'll take into consideration our issues as well as the project advances. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the council? Okay, remarks of the department heads. Maria?
Good evening, everyone. Just an update. We're beginning to prepare for the holiday season in the downtown area, the decorations, the tree lighting, all that good stuff, and I'll keep you posted as we have our program prepared. Also, for our department, our CDBG Action Plan, the 2016 Plan, is out for public comment period right now. This is the plan that we put forth so we could get our 2016 funding, and it'll be coming to you to have the mayor approve to sign and forward to HUD. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any question, Maria?
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Chris?
Good evening, everybody. To start out on a little lighter note, we did have our Harvest Fest Saturday. It was very well attended. I'd like to thank the city offices that got involved with the trunk-or-treat, which was really nice. We had the police department there, and community development, the assessor's office, the mayor's office, our parks department, and also the staff at the teen center. And we had a couple hundred, we had 350 pumpkins, and they were gone in no time for decorating and games, and it went really well, and Middletown cares were there. On the business side of things, I know you see some resolutions for some transfers for us tonight. One with the building, we did put our security wall in and security locks, so we can actually buzz people in and out to tighten up security at the building. And we're adding, our lights are out in the gym, so since we have to get up there and do them, we're going to do them right with LED lighting. So that is something you'll see there. You'll also see some overtime for our maintenance guys. We do keep a tight watch on this, but we have a very, very busy city with a lot of extra special events, and it requires cleanup and moving of stages, and we had four different horse shows this year, and pavilions being used every weekend still, and ball fields being used every Saturday and Sunday. We're still lining up to five athletic fields right through to November 1st. So it is a need, and that's why it's out there. And as you get into your capital budgets, just kind of reminder, we're really looking to improve the playground at Maple Hill. I think in-house, we can actually add another pavilion there. We lost that pavilion that collapsed with the snow, which could bring in more revenue. And we're also looking to cut costs on the Maple Hill pool before it becomes a damage park pool. But we are getting a price of about $80,000 just to fix the surface, and actually, as far as the filter goes, we can use the one that was in damage, which will save us a tremendous amount of money because it's only two years old, and we're looking into that. So if people have questions with that, please see me on the side, and I'll be happy to answer them. That's about it.
Any question for Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Jacob?
Good evening, all. I'm going to be very brief. Our men are working on water main break right now on Cherry Street by Fairlawn Avenue. It's in the town of Walkill, but it's City of Middletown water, and it should be wrapped up within an hour. So that's the latest update for the water main breaks, unfortunately. Regarding the project on County Route Seventy-Eight, I'm going to be walking the project site tomorrow about 1:30, and I just talked to the residents in here, and hopefully we'll swing by their homes. And the engineers for the owner of the project will be there with me, and they will hear, they can hear firsthand what the issues are and what the concerns are that the local residents have regarding the project and the construction that will be taking place. The psychiatric center took a long time for the lights to come on, but as you probably would see tonight, if you swing by, about 75% of them are on now, and the campus is lit. The other projects we have worked on, which is basically, today we completed it, that's why I'm going to update you on it. We have changed all of our wired communication through leased phone lines to communicate between our water storage tanks across the city with our water treatment plant. We changed all that to a radio signal. This way, we will not be dependent on the power, on the tree hitting the phone lines or anything like that, and we will have continuous reliable signal. Also, our men, we did in-house, replaced the valve inside an old vault by the Highland Avenue tank, replaced the instrumentation there. And today, they've been converted from the leased phone line signal to the radio signal, which is wireless signal. We also have a battery backup for that unit, so in case, if there's a power outage in that location too, we'll continue to communicate with our water storage tank. At the same time, we are looking at the other storage tanks in there to install some solar panels in there, so we can completely be independent of the grid and any communication through the phone company, just by going directly through the phone signal, and then we will have the solar panels give us the power needed to energize our valves and communicate with the water, with the water treatment plant. And this is also required now for, it's more redundancy and reliability for our system in terms of homeland security, so we can be able to lock out tanks right now without having somebody to go travel over there to shut the valve off or something like that. We can remotely now lock the tank out if we have to, in case of any threat or any incident. With that, I'm going to stop. If you have any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob? Thank you with the lights.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, mayor?
I'm going to briefly touch on the situation with the Middletown schools and the area with the bomb scares. We had two more today, as you know, one at the Maple Hill School, which is physically in the town of Walkill, and the other at SUNY Orange. The media, Times Record had a column this week, this past weekend, regarding not paying too much attention, or giving them too much attention in the media because they feel that that's generating more of the, basically what the person, the sick person who's doing this wants. But we felt, we met today, and we're getting another briefing tomorrow, that the public should at least know at this point, and we agree with the paper's position, by the way, that all of our police agencies, Middletown Police, Walkill Police, State Police, and FBI are working on this issue. It's a very complicated process. It's going through, I think it's called swatting. We spoke to Dan Depew, the supervisor, about potential litigation against the companies that are allowing this to happen with the transfer of the internet signal, how they're doing it. That's a entirely separate issue, but we want people to know that the, all resources of the Middletown Police Department, Walkill Police Department, New York State Police, and the FBI are working on it. We understand your frustration and your concern, and we're just as baffled by all of you, but we want to make sure that we made some kind of comment to reassure you that we're not just taking it for granted, that people are actually doing a lot of work on this, and we hope to have positive results at some point in the future. But we would also ask, and I've got something wrong with my eyes here, is that the public, if you know somebody that's talking about these things and saying inappropriate things, please call one of the police agencies, because usually people do this for recognition. And the, so there might be some chatter out there somewhere. You might think it's inconsequential, but overall, anything you have, any information you have, please share with the police agencies. On other news, the budget, you received an email today from Treasurer Don Paris. We're anticipating voting on the budget on December 1st, and we are also in the process of preparing a capital budget. Tomorrow, I believe, you'll read an article in a newspaper regarding the tax rebate program, where Middletown is one of the communities that qualified, along with Orange County and the Middletown School District, under the governor's proposal. So we all met the tax guideline, tax cap guidelines, and all of our residents will be eligible for that tax rebate. Also today, that was submitted to the state was the REDC applications from the regional council. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any question to mayor?
Did you hear about the, when you went to Marist for that presentation? Did you hear anything back from it yet?
The, you're talking about the Regional Economic Development Council? Yes, we did receive priority project status. That was now officially submitted by the Regional Economic Development Council to the governor's office, and we should know in December how much money it is. And if the region wins the competition, the second competition, we would be eligible for a lot more money. And it's two projects we approved for. The private project, which was Clemson Brewery, they've received priority project status. We received it for the larger urban center project, which is the Middletown Community Campus. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor.
Thanks.
Okay, remarks of Aldman. Aldman Massey?
I just wanted to thank the Middletown Police Department, Middletown Fire Department. I was able on Saturday to go over to, they had their rival football game, and they raised funds for breast cancer awareness, breast cancer awareness. And they raised quite a bit of money, and I give them credit for that. And anyone that was there, participated, or was just a spectator, I thank you for doing that. That's it.
Aldman Burr. Alderman Cassoon?
I have nothing this evening.
Aldman Johnson?
I join you in thanking all involved for the lighting of the MPC campus. Particularly the residents of the Third Ward in Monhegan will appreciate that. I was able to attend the dedication of the new tunnel in the town of Walkill, and even though it's not in the city, it will benefit all of us in the region. It's a great way to get around from one place to the other, and I congratulate, that project started 10 years ago, so things always take time, apparently. Planning and economic development met this evening. We took, we had discussion on two items that have resulted in resolutions for public hearings, one of which will be a subdivision for the County Route Seventy-Eight project, so presumably there'll be another public hearing on Monday, November 2nd with respect to that project. And the third item was tabled pending clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldman Witt?
Thank you very much. First off, I just would like to say that tonight, we're going to be voting on the resolution about the citywide cleanup period for leaves not being able to put those in the street until November 2nd. Please, everybody, strongly consider following that. That creates a very dangerous situation when we don't, especially with Halloween coming, because the kids have not as many places or the ability to walk in as many spots. So that could be dangerous, so please think about that if you can. And just for the local businesses, on November 13th through the 15th, the state boy soccer championships will be in Middletown, and that means anywhere from 15,000 to 20,000 people will be in our community, so please consider reaching out to them when they are here. Perhaps there's an opportunity for you to make some money. So, thank you.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. Our constituents' meeting, we'll say this Monday, because that's, the council meeting's been changed to November 2nd, Monday. But what we're doing with our Second Ward constituents' meeting to repeat is we're combining it with the Fourth Ward, so we will, from now on, be on the second Monday. So starting in November, November 9th will be our Second Ward constituents' meeting. So please come out. Last Tuesday was Neighborhood Watch Meeting. The older woman, Graham Cassoon, and the police chief came by, Sergeant Khalil and Officer Bailey, and there was another very good discussion on Middletown and traffic, et cetera. The next meeting will be in March, I believe, so we're going to take those cold winter months off, but if there is a real neighborhood issue, you can always call any of us, and we can go ahead and have a Neighborhood Watch, or you can come to the constituents' meeting. So we are available. The public hearing and the subdivision on Mendel Bombs Project, we will be watching that, and I will be, at some point, asking what the county asked, is what will the tax status of that be, and how are we going to handle that, because we haven't discussed that yet. The warming station, the meetings for volunteering, the training sessions are October 28th, November 2nd, and November 19th. Those are at 7:00 PM. That's about an hour, an hour and a half. If you're able to volunteer, the actual warming station opens November 15th for the season. That's at St. Paul's United Methodist Church. And if you have questions or can volunteer, Nancy at 342-0209. And she's really the heart of it and what keeps it going. She's our volunteer coordinator. November 8th, Sunday at 3:00 in the afternoon at the Paramount is the Chris Farlickus Tribute, and it sounds like it's going to be a really excellent show. It's going to be a fundraiser for the community foundation, and I do hope they sell out. And finally, because the mayor would never say this, let's go Mets. Thank you.
Aldman Francois?
Thank you. I just wanted to take the moment to congratulate the Middies Football, Varsity Football Team for retaining the Erie Bell. Go Middies!
Aldman Summers?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
New business.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner to move the common council meeting from Tuesday, November 3rd, to Monday, November 2nd, not to coincide with Election Day.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to hold a public hearing on Monday, November 2nd, 2015, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed amendment to the zoning code I-2 heavy industrial districts.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to hold a public hearing on Monday, November 2nd, 2015, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed two-lot subdivision for 48 to 66 County Highway Seventy-Eight.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Summers to amend the city code to proscribe unpermitted demolition of buildings or structure and to provide penalties who violates the provisions.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Summers, seconded by Aldman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean-François for the city to declare an upgrade to the aeronorobic digestion portion of the city-owned wastewater treatment facility, that the proposed project is an unlisted action under SECRE, and the common council is lead agency.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean-François, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean-François that the city will hold a general citywide cleanup for leaves.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Graham Cassoon. Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to authorize the treasurer to make a transfer of $5,000 within the 2015 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department to cover costs of lighting and heating in the pool buildings.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $30,000 within the 2015 budget to correct budget allocation of principal and interest.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $15,000 within the Recreation and Parks Department 2015 budget to cover a shortage in overtime.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $6,000 within the Recreation and Parks Department 2015 budget to complete the installation of a security wall and door for the recreation office and to cover building costs, and to purchase field paint and lime for our athletic fields.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Graham Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $30,000 within the Corporation Council's 2015 budget to cover outstanding and future litigation.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Graham Cassoon to authorize Lieutenant Greg Matakis to attend the Procedure of Justice Symposium to be held in Saratoga Springs Monday, November 9th through Tuesday, November 10th, 2015, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Graham Cassoon, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Humane Society of Port Jervis Deer Park, Inc., starting January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Jean-François. Any discussion? Aldman Johnson.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that as a veterinarian, I work with the ACOs for Middletown and Walkill and Port Jervis. There is a, there is a problem when these ACOs pick up animals that there's no place to put them. I work with Port Jervis. I was discussing this with them today. If you are a resident and want to surrender an animal, it's about a one-month wait to get a space to put the animal there. So it's really in the spirit of cooperation that all this happens, and we appreciate it. Also, I do work both pro bono and for discounted fees for Port Jervis. I don't feel any problem in voting on this resolution, but I wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Fully noted. Anyone else? Roll.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?